And that passes unanimously. All right, we will move on to citizen participation. I do want to say that I did try to have a member of the USDA, well, two members actually. Something went a little bit off on that, so they were not able to make it tonight. Bill will give a brief update before we start citizen participation, because I know someone of you wanted to talk about that tonight.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The whole situation arose from a citizen requesting some pest control for birds that were roosting by her house and the feces and the vomit was causing a problem. So she contacted the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and they have all of the permits and the wherewithal to do that. And in the course of that, they just asked the city to assist them in placing that effigy to frighten the birds off. And that was the only involvement we had. Now, there's a person at the USDA, her name is Sarah Espinoza. If you want to contact her, she can give you the rundown on the whole thing.
And I don't know if it was Sarah and Jill or who was supposed to come in that. If we still need them at a later date, we can try and bring them in to bedders.
Yes. Jill just texted me and says, oh, can we shoot first thing right after the first of the year? He'll come in if we need to.
I was just wondering, where on her property is all the bird droppings and etc. where?
It was all over the sidewalk. She lives on the corner there.
Okay.
And it just turned that brick sidewalk white. And it was, and that kind of, the acid and the things and the vomit, and then the feces carry a disease. And you can get it on your shoes, your pets can get it. You can bring it in that, try it in the house, and your grandkids can get it. So it was pretty nasty there. I saw that myself. But then, like I say, she contacted the agency.
Is this two or three years?
This is two years in a row.
Okay. So it's been going on before?
Oh, yes, yes. It's been.
So you use the term effigy, but I understand that a vulture was actually shot and hung by its feet.
This was a mummified vulture. I don't know where he got it or how he got it, but...
It wasn't part of the flock on that corner?
No, I don't believe so.
We're not privy to all that information?
No, and the city doesn't have any involvement in that.
Oh, okay. Would you give us the name of the person to...
Sarah Espinoza.
Espinoza, okay.
Yes, at the USDA.
Is that an office out of Pueblo?
Is that an office out of Pueblo?
Yes, in Pueblo, Colorado.
Sir, you had a question in the back?
Are there any other refugees hanging in town that you all know?
No, sir. No, sir. That just prohibits the group from roosting there when they see that one. Last I talked to the USDA, they didn't have any others up. They certainly didn't want to cause a problem or anything. You almost, you know, they do that very quietly.
So are we going to get this practice banned here in the city?
I guess when you talk to the federal government, because they're the ones that are in charge of that, not us.
What kind of ban did he ask about?
About banning the wildlife.
If there is a federal ban of...
You know, they got their permits, correct?
Sure, the federal says that you and I can't shoot a vulture or bird of prey or anything.
Right, they're protected.
But the USDA folks, those are government hunters or... And they have all the permits and the wherewithal to do that kind of thing.
But we could prohibit the use of city property?
Well, it could be the city, yeah. If you prohibit the use of city property, yes, sir.
And then, who owns the tree? It's on the corner of the sidewalk, and those are city trees?
Well, see, those, the homeowner's responsible for the trees, even though they are in the right-of-way between the curb and the sidewalk. But I'm not sure if, I think those are all in the right-of-way. I don't think they're in their yard. But...
They're big, but I don't know.
The ordinance, the city code, says that those trees are the responsibility of the homeowner to maintain. Is that correct, Mr. Maloff?
That is correct.
Mike?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
So are they all gone now?
I have no idea. Didn't go look. Yeah, I don't know if they're migratory seasonal type of birds.
Probably. No, they are migratory, and they've been staging. That is, they collect in a group, stage for migration in those trees for as long as I've lived here, 23 years. And I just, I feel it was a tragedy that they weren't more appreciated, because I felt like coming up that hill from Safeway, it was a miracle to see them soaring above, you know, right in the heart of the city. But then I have a different attitude toward birds in general.
Well, everybody has their likes and dislikes, sure.
Right. They're kind of iconically ugly. And if we passed an ugliness ordinance like Pauline asked for, they would have been bad. But they're beneficial birds, you know, they...
Certainly, they're all in...
They take care of carry-on, and they're incredibly efficient at it.
Yes. That's why God created them.
We will get back when the USDA, if we do it at the next meeting, just so we can have further clarification going forward.
Okay.
Now on for the regular citizen participation. If you have anything you'd like to talk about, you will have five minutes. When Maloney starts the clock, you'll have to say your name and your address. If anyone so chooses, now is the time to do that.
I don't have anything to say.
You're wait, you've got one behind you. He raised his hand first.
My name is Bob.
Come to the mic, Bob. I can hear you, but there's people that are watching that might not be able to.
My name's Bob Houston.
Hold on, Bill, do you have that one?
Yes, sir.
Do we have that? There we go.
Yes, my name is Bob Houston. I own property at 413 East 12, right next door to 411 East 12. The house has been abandoned for many, many years. It's a pink house. I've noticed here lately, my duplex right there is keeping it clean and so forth. I noticed some, a party from, I believe, 1220 Rice has been moving quite a bit of property down to this 411. Wheelbarrow, wagon, whatever was traded to bring it down. And that's where the two big trailers are sitting right there on that property, which everybody's noticed that this been competing quite a bit. It's starting to be an eyesore. I've been in, I hunted for a long time. In fact, I lived there for two blocks before I bought it. So I know the neighborhood very well. And I noticed that the homeless enjoyed the house while it was empty. So we've had some problems with that. But we noticed here recently, somebody's started to move in, especially the warm weather. Right now, it's brought a lot of, all this property from the location down to this other location, stacking underneath the trailers. They've put a new fence up right now. I notice we've got three dogs there. I'm not sure if the property has lights and water or gas or anything. I don't know if they're using it for storing, to watch, from one location to another. I wasn't sure what the city was doing. I heard some things about they were trying to clean up above us, and I'm not quite sure where we're at at this point with that.
Okay, Mr. Maloff, do you want to...
Mr. Klein, Mr. Jackson, and I went and surveyed not only that neighborhood, but a lot more in that area. We're very much aware of what you're pointing out. It's going to be a difficult task.
I understand that, Phil.
We want to get through the Christmas season before we took anymore. We've started condemnations on several other properties. And here's, even though we get through the legal process of condemnation, court order that says we can knock it down, if we can't get that into the line of when we're going to knock it down, it just sits, so nothing happens, and that could be years. We've got several properties that we've gotten decrees for condemnation, but they're not in line to get knocked down yet. So the solution to the problem isn't immediate, but the acknowledgement of the problem and the willingness to address it is sincere.
Okay. You're right.
Well, due to the warm weather we've been having, they sure have been moving a lot, which I can understand if I was in their shoes. But it's, we also have two vehicles. We have a camper and a vehicle on the property now, along with the big two trailers. There's also another car that just showed up on Rice that has no tags on it. So maybe the code office needs to address some of that, please? Just trying to clean up the neighborhood. And I can understand the legal part of where you're coming from, and the city stand by.
Bob, I'll tell you, it's sickening. We, you know, it's just real tough to look at. And we've been trying to motivate this gentleman to get on with things, and goes in one ear and out the other, sort of like when my wife tells me to go mow the lawn.
Well, I guess, I love my town.
Thank you. And you're not the only one in that neighborhood that has called and talked about that property. So that's why Mr. Jackson and Mr. Klein and Mr. Maloff want to go look at that area in addition to other areas that something we're working on and to doing some stuff with, so.
Yeah, so.
Thank you for coming out, though, and saying that, so that's important.
Douglas Golding, 1316 Lincoln. I just want to wish all of you a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Same to everybody out there. And I just wanted to pass out to the new council members a copy of what I had given to council members back in March.
Thanks, Doug. Merry Christmas to you. Thanks for coming.
Anyone else for citizen participation? Nancy? All right, moving on, Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, this is a housekeeping matter. We offered a first reading at the last meeting in ordinance that clarifies the imposition of the sales tax. This is a document that's been sent to DOLAN, and then they became happy with this. It doesn't change anything from what the taxpayers and electorate voted for just recently. It's simply letting the paperwork catch up. I would respectfully request a successful passage on second reading.
Do I have a motion?
I motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Maloff, once again.
Mr. Mayor, as the new council members may not be aware, every year we do this, we consider the same resolutions. The resolutions are directed at instructions to management as to how to operate, both in terms of open meetings and depositories, reporting of crimes, legal notice publications, and determination of enterprise funds. They're all very necessary. They're also all very routine. And for the old hats on this board, that's you, Chandra.
Literally.
Literally.
Seasoned hats.
This is just the same as we've done for years and years and years. I respectfully request you consider each separately and successfully pass the resolutions.
Right, let's go in order to have a motion for the first.
I'll make a motion for the posting of open meetings.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, and I know I have discussion on this one. It feels like we do this the last two years, and our local newspapers keep declining. And is Rocky Ford daily now? Is it?
No.
No? Okay. And LaHonta is just once a week? And we're using both right now? Just LaHonta?
The Rocky Ford is...
That what we're talking about just now?
I guess.
Yeah, I can't think of the...
Okay, so when we do open meetings or legal notices, is that going to suffice with LaHonta moving to one day a week? Because wasn't that in the last year that that happened?
Is that the number four? Number one is on open meetings.
But normally we put those out to when we...
The Florida.
Yeah. Oh, we don't do that on paper? No? Okay, I guess we'll wait until before then. I thought we did both. I guess we don't. Okay. So just keep that in mind for number four. Any other discussion on one? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Do I have a motion for two?
I'll make the resolution of designating official depositories for city funds.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I have a question. It says various funds for the city for the calendar year 2023. Is it? Should it be 2024?
It should.
Okay.
Good guess.
Well, then I'd like to make a friendly amendment that it be changed to 2024.
All right, with that in, any other discussion? I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Number three.
I'll make a motion on the offenses against city property resolution.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Number four, do I have a motion for number four?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution on the publication of legal notices.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second, and do we have any other discussion?
What Joe said earlier.
But is it Rocky Ford? Is that doable? Do other cities...
You're not required to have a daily pub. You're required to have a publication that appears locally. And that can be a monthly, a weekly, a whatever. That's the critical element, not daily.
Okay, does, are there any other cities that are comparable to us that are doing online? Does that work? How does that...
Answer is yes, there's online publications going on. Various online producers, we have one in the audience, have anxiously offered their services there. But the way the statute reads, we still have to do the paper notification.
Even if we have online, we have to do paper? Now, in the event that... I don't know what Rocky Ford's plans are. I don't wish anything bad on them. But we don't have that, how does that work out?
Pick a paper.
So we could do like Pueblo Chieftain or...
Well, if it's generally circulated, that's a question of fact. I would think that we would look closer. If LaHonta shut down, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I think we'd go to Rocky Ford, then there's Ordway, Ben County. But it's got to be something of general circulation, whatever that means.
That was just a question, because it feels like it's getting smaller and smaller.
Yeah, it's a concept.
Do you know what we pay for that now?
Not right off the top, no. We do like a comparison.
Is it 4.4 million now? Sorry, okay. Any other discussion? Nope, I'll ask for your vote. All right, number five.
I'll make a motion for the resolution.
Bad in a thousand. I said you're bad in a thousand now.
At designating the enterprise funds.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
We're liquor licenses, Jeff?
No.
Know what I meant? Oh, okay. Title company called and said that there's a gap in some property that we had sold long ago. A gap in the chain of title means that somebody's nervous about transfer from A to B or from B to C. So the solution is very easy. It is simply to issue a quit claim, Dean, saying we don't know what we own in that property. If we own anything, we're going to just pass it along, and that will plug the gap that exists, makes the title company happy, it makes Southeast, or, yeah, Southeast Colorado Enterprise Development Fund happy. And it's nothing that has any economic significance to us. It's mostly just a matter of courtesy, clean up someone's mistake, and it's easy for us to do it.
All right, do I have a motion on that?
I motion for the resolution authorizing the sale of real property.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And this is pertaining to two different parcels of land, isn't it?
Yes. I think they're next to each other.
One's on Adams, one's on Lewis.
Yeah, what are we talking about?
I think that's the way it is. Is it, Bill? I don't remember. Well, just on the other street. It's just one street over from Lewis.
They don't back that.
No, the other ones, is it on Braddish or Grace? Lewis and...
Adams and Lewis.
Oh, yeah, and the... Adelope Trail.
Oh, yeah, there's two blocks in between.
Yeah, there's two blocks in between. Those are houses that we tore down, or were vacant lots.
All right, just a question.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
The last resolution has to do with the request by the finance director to change the names of some funds. It has no significance other than for her convenience in keeping matters separate and easier to define. She checked with the auditors. They're tickled pink. Mr. Klein has authorized it. All we're doing is changing names. There's no switch of funds, no exchanges, no anything. We're just calling A now A-plus.
We're not calling A-plus A.
Okay, there you go.
I make a motion to report with resolutions a certain change of fundings.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. All right, okay, so if you guys are following along or if you don't have this updated, we forgot to put the ABRMC appointment on there. So put that as number one right now.
And is that council appointee?
This is a council appointee, okay? To my knowledge, as of right now, we have two people that would like to be considered for that. There's still, if someone else besides Paul and Maureen wants to say that they're interested in that, now would be the time to let us know. If not, I would like to just hear briefly from Maureen and from Paul. Your thoughts on why he would like to be on the hospital board? Who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay.
All right. My previous experience serving on boards, I have experience with the University of Colorado system. When I was on the Board of Regents for six years, there was a lot of crossover with the hospital board, and we did a lot of interaction with them. I was on the board when we approved purchasing the former Bittsens Army Medical Center that is now the Anshuets Medical Campus, and was involved in all of the agreements with Children's Hospital and the VA deciding to do my evidence of understanding to move out to the Anshuets now, Anshuets Medical Campus. I've also served, I believe it was 10 years, on the Quality and Safety Committee for Children's Hospital of Colorado. I was appointed by the board in that role. A lot of what I did was patient safety advocacy, some that arose from personal experience with my own kids, but also just being an advocate. And when I talked to Andy Flimmer about some of these experiences, he had expressed that the quality and safety piece was something that he would find of great value at Arkansas Valley Medical Center to have somebody with the experience that I have. I've also served on national quality forums as a patient advocate voice for quality and safety measures. So I have experience on working with hospital boards, and it would be, it would be an honor to be able to serve the hospital here. I have a kiddo that makes high use of medical systems, and it's something that I have personal and professional passion for.
Thank you. Do you guys have any questions for Maureen? Paul?
Realizing how pivotal and important that the ABRMC is to our community and being approached by the board to see if I was interested in serving on the board, I absolutely would love to serve on this board, given the importance of the hospital. And certainly don't have the qualifications or the pedigree that Maureen has, but I understand and realize that we need to fight for this hospital. I know that there are always going to be tough times for rural hospitals. And having been a part of this community, I'd just like the opportunity to serve on that.
Any questions for Paul? I think the easiest way to do this would be if one of you have a motion for either of the candidates, then we will look for a second. And if that person gets it, then they get it. Not... Would that be fair, Dean?
Yeah, if the first motion fails to pass, we'd still need another motion.
So I'd want a motion from the board on who their preferences, or not their preferences, who the first one's going to be, and then we'll vote.
I would like to motion to, sorry. I would like to make a motion to have Paul Velazquez represent the Arkansas Valley Regional Medical Center Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I will ask for any discussion. Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes 5-1. Oh, Lisa's gone. All right, now we will move on to number one, which is really number two. Planning Commission. And then Paul, did you want to make an announcement on that, on Planning Commission?
Yes, I'd like to step away from the Planning Commission for previous appointment, I guess, to the hospital board. Have to give up something to get something, I guess.
Well, you did a lot of work on the Planning Commission the past two years, didn't we?
We did, that was, that was a lot of work.
And thank you for that.
So with Planning Commission and Paul stepping away, we will now need a Planning Commission appointee from council. Now is your time to say if you would be interested in that turn up. Chandra is already, is already on Planning Commission, so she's using by default. I can't make motions or anything, so you guys, don't look at me.
I'm making a motion to appoint Chandra Ochoa to the Planning Commission along with Tom Seba.
We can do that first, yeah, but then we'll still need one from council.
Oh, they're the mayor appointees, sorry. Got it.
Second.
It should be, I think what we need is a council member to step forward and say, I'll, I'll take the shot. And that's, then a motion is made.
Well, we've got to do those two anyway, but then after that, we need a council member to start thinking about saying exactly what Dean wants them to say.
To take over for Paul's vacant...
Yes.
Okay.
So go ahead, and we have a motion on the floor for Chandra and Tom for the mayor's appointee. Do I have a second on that one?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay. Now, do I have anyone on council that is interested in serving for Paul's spot?
That's not where my expertise is, so I'm going to wait.
That's not where my expertise is, so I'm gonna wait until something that would use what I have experience with. But thanks.
I would step up for it.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion for Mr. Stoker?
I'll motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote.
Connect crystal.
I think it was an axiom when I was in the Army, you never volunteer for anything, just, just wanting that help.
That passes unanimously. All right. Number two. This is a, this is a council appointee, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Paul, do you still wish to serve on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board?
I do.
Okay, does anyone else wish to serve on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board? Hearing none, would there be a motion for Paul?
I motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. All right, now on to tree board. Mrs. Ochoa, would you like to continue to serve on tree board?
Sure.
Okay, and anyone else like to serve on tree board? Hearing none, can I get a motion for Mrs. Ochoa?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
No questions. What does the tree board do?
Hold on, let me vote, and then we'll do this, okay?
Oh, okay.
Can we get your vote? And that passes unanimously. Okay, Mrs. Ochoa?
We meet, and we did not meet last year due to budget constraints, but come Arbor Day, we'll purchase a tree and we take it somewhere to plant it, and there's a big celebration and a mayor proclamation. We were also kind of the hub for when the city did have money and they did like the 50/50 tree removal, wood trimming.
So is that in effect still?
It wasn't last year, but it could come back.
Yes.
What about sidewalks, is that 50/50?
It could come back.
Could come back?
Mm-hmm. That was the importance of the 2-way push is to bring back those great
Programs.
Programs for the City of La Jolla's citizens.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to Board of Utility Commissioners, the current representative is Mr. Velazquez. Mr. Velazquez, would you like to continue being the representative for the utility board?
Yes, not to be a board dog, but given the upcoming conduit discussions, and coming along with that, I'd like to stay with that.
Would anyone else like to be on, or would like to be considered for the utility board? All right, if not, can I get a motion for Mr. Velazquez?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. Put it though. And that passes unanimously. All right. I hope we're still going, okay. These are, to the library board first. Do I have a motion for the library board, Julie Worley?
I'll motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. This is for the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, for Kathy Martinez, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. Oh. There, right, Paul, you're off, okay. Now that passes unanimously. I'd kick clear instead of voting. Now I have tourism board, Ron, oh, Dorthe, I'm sorry. Back to Senior Citizens Advisory Board, Dorthe McLean, do I have a motion for Dorthe?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Now on to tourism board, Ron Davis for the tourism board, do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. All right, for tourism board, Colleen Oakwest, do I have a motion for Colleen?
I'll motion.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. And I want to thank everybody that volunteered for our board openings that we have out there. During the year, sometimes, you know, someone steps away, someone gets too busy, we will post those in the newspaper, I guess, until further notice or other places. If at any time you're interested, please see Mal, and she'll tell you what that entails and how we can...
We don't have a library board vacancy still.
Okay, we have one library board vacancy, and I think we have another Planning Commission coming up, but we already have a letter for it, we just have to do that at the next meeting. So, so thank you everyone for volunteering, thank you for those on council who step up for those roles. It's always great when we have more than one person going for a board. Thank you to Jeremiah for stepping up and doing Planning Commission as well, too. All right, Mr. Maloff?
Before we get on to liquor licenses, I want to tell you how thoroughly depressed I am that as you consider the appointment for the tree board, that I didn't make my annual smart remark about getting to the root of the problem, going out on the limb, leaving people alone.
You can leave.
I'm sorry.
You can leave.
I'm just heartbroken that you guys have taken that from me, but okay, for the better. Mr. Mayor Otero, Junior College Foundation has requested a special events permit for their New Year's Eve Gala Event, December 31st, from 7:00 PM to 11:59 PM. The application is in order, fees have been paid, posting's been done, city management recommends favorable consideration.
I think you said a word we're not supposed to say, I think it's just Otero College now.
I think technically, they're legally still like...
The application is in Otero Junior.
Yeah. And with the Secretary of State, it's still Otero Junior College Foundation. It's the foundation, the foundation's still Otero Junior College Foundation, legally.
Not on our packet, so what's going on, Mal, I'm just kidding.
What is it?
All right, so, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second. I'll take the second.
Double jinx. Any discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff?
Many Barney Doing Businesses loaf and jug at 918 West Third Street in Landis requested a renewal of their off premises. Bear and Wyden license currently scheduled to expire on January 25th, 2024. That license renewal application is properly filled out, fees have been paid, posting's been done. City management supervisors have indicated compliance with the code and recommend favorable consideration.
I have a motion for the renewal, yeah, vision.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. All right, committee and board reports, any committee and board reports?
I attended the senior senator advisory board on the 7th. Just briefly, 499 members. The 29th of December will be, they'll be having a dance, which they haven't had in a while. There will be snacks available, it's from 7 to 10. The 21st is the Christmas luncheon, roast beef and baby potatoes. Today was the last day to sign up for it, so I guess if you didn't get to it, it's too late now. But for those that did sign up, just to remember that you can bring a covered dish, you don't have to pay $5, if not, it's $5. And the senior center will be lending its time and effort for cooking for turkeys for the Jay's Christmas dinner, and they'll be cooking 12 turkeys, 12 20-pound turkeys.
Are they doing all the turkeys this year for?
They're doing 12, I don't know if they farmed out, that's a lot of turkeys, so I don't know.
Well, Paul, when we went there for Monday, what did we go, I think she said there's 25 turkeys.
Okay, well, that's great.
25.
So that's awesome, these are 25, are 20-pound turkeys, so that's awesome.
25 turkeys.
Thank you.
Any other committee and board reports? All right, Mr. Jackson, who is filling in for Rick, who is on vacation, city manager comments.
He wanted you to know that Brick and Tow Project has got most of the concrete trail placed between First and 10th Street. TLM's been doing that work for us. They're working on the street crossings, and then the bridge abutments, they ordered a bridge abutment Friday. So, and those, that equipment, those bridges will be in sometime in January, so we'll get those placed and look real nice. Makes that park down there very attractive. The crews finished putting in a fire line for Sutherland's along Highway 109, and we placed new services for residents on Highway 109. Parks and Recreation, the K2 basketball games have started, and want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
All right, any questions for Mr. Jackson? You got off easy, man.
Short and sweet.
All right, governing body comments?
I have a question. So, two weeks from now is New Year's Day, do we meet on the Tuesday after? When it's a city holiday? Okay.
Any other governing body comments or questions?
I'd like to first acknowledge Mr. Rick Aragon, the sixth in for the Fairview Cemetery. I don't know if you had the opportunity to, to watch short documentary that was done by Rocky Mountain PBS, it was an excellent short story on what goes on at Fairview Cemetery. Dedication to Mr. Aragon and the crew that works out there. Thank you to them first and foremost for the work that they do. And it's nice to see La Jolla represented on PBS. A little bit about La Jolla PD, they've been very busy, they have over 1,400 traffic contacts. And I know Todd may be doing an end of year report. Want me to mention that code enforcement has been very busy, and it sounds like they're gonna continue to be busy based on what some of our citizens have come up here and talked about. And last but not least, I'd like to offer my condolences, and I'm sure the condolences of the entire city council. We lost Mike Steeves, who was a longtime city employee. A longtime police officer, highly revered police officer, and instructor in everything. Mike was just a tremendous individual and super intelligent. So anytime you're around him, you just, I always felt, loved being around Mike, even if it was for a short time, just to hear his intellect at work, it was, it was kind of just nice to be around something like that. It's a loss for our city, and again, just to express my condolences from Betty and myself and the city council to his family. You know, it's a tough time of the year, you address that, and then hopefully they find a little bit of solace in knowing that Mike was just going to be missed and was a great guy.
Any other governing body comments? I want to echo what Paul said about Mike, that was a really just tough blow for us when we got that, whether it was, you know, management or all city employees. And me and Mal were sitting up here just telling Mike Steeves stories to each other, you know, his wealth of knowledge from law enforcement to HTML coding. One time I said, "My emails aren't working," and I got this lesson about HTML, and we switched in 1993 to, I just thought my emails might, that's all I knew. But he was, he was very open with sharing all his information that he, that he had, and with 2A, he was a vital source of information in getting that information out. In his own way, in his own way, but he was very helpful with 2A. And it's gonna be a loss for the city. We also lost a community member who owned a business downtown, the barista. That was another tough, tough loss for, for this community. And like I said, there's never a good time for it, but, you know, it's always tough right by the holidays, and we just hope that we can make it through and, and help each other out, you know, if you see someone struggling, or, or, you know, they're dealing with a tough time, try and, try and do your best to remind them that, you know, as La Jolla's citizens, we look out for one another and we care about one another. So just lean on, on them when, when they're going through tough times. On to some more happier news, there was a holiday lighting contest that I was able to take some pretty judges around to, to go and judge those lights. And the winner was first place 902 Carson. Second place was Seven Cactus Drive, and third place was 33 Sierra. So if you get the chance to go out and check out those lights, they're really well done. My, my girls loved doing that, that was the highlight for them to, to go around and look at all the lights. We did it anyway, but this year they got to judge and tell me why and why not, they thought, you know, that should be that. Another one that was really cool, that's not on the list, but it was a neighborhood, did their own, they all had the same Santa Claus outside, and I think that'll be cool going forward. So, you know, hopefully we can try to build on that and see what next year will bring for us. You know, the Christmas spirit is alive and wild in La Jolla. Other than that, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. And like I said, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's coming up next year, and we just, you know, enjoy this time with our families and buckle up for next year, and do our best to keep this city moving forward and being the best that we can be. I can't go adjourned, because we're going to executive, there will be no business afterwards, though, Adrian?
Thank you.
So, do I have someone that wants to?
I'll make a motion, I'm going to executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS 2464024B.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming out, have a good night.
For La Jolla City Council, with your Southeast Colorado news, I'm Adrian Hart.